Call to order this meeting of the Monongate County Commission for December 13th, 2017. Please note for the record that Commissioner Bloom is not present. He has other duties to attend to. He'll be here this afternoon. If you would, please stand for a moment of silent meditation and then the pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Also, Colleen is sitting in today for Renetta, so she will get the consent and approval. Good morning, Colleen.
Good morning. There are 15 exoneration listings for $4,483.01. There are no minutes to approve. General County vouchers are $269,055.07. Cole Severance, $12,033. 911, 26653. Chestnut Ridge Park, $2,438.32. Accessors valuation, $2,425.62. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $13,331.07. 911, 18812. Accessors valuation, $950 for total voucher for $300,687.73. There are no budget revisions. Position and vacancies for boards and authorities are Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, Historic Landmarks Commission, and fiduciary orders for December 13th, 2017.
Okay. Move for approval? Second, been properly moved and second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Introductions of new employees or personnel changes.
Hello.
Hello.
This is Sarah. I'm the Director of the Day Report Center, and today I have with me D'Angelo Ellis and Ashley Seim. With your approval, they will be employed at the Day Report Center for the case aid drug screening technician. They will be part-time, starting at $10 an hour.
Thank you.
Move for approval?
Second, it's been properly moved and second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
I believe we have another introduction.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Blaine Enfali III. The Sheriff seeks your approval to appoint Blaine as a full-time transport officer with an effective start date of December 16th.
Move for approval?
Second, been properly moved and second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you and welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Are there any other introductions of new employees? Hearing none, we'll move to comments from the public. You're now open for comments from the public. Please come forward, identify yourself, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jason Donahue. I live at 645 Southview Street in Morgantown. I just wanted to discuss briefly an idea that was discussed at the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast, which is the creation of a mountain biking trail network throughout Mon County. I just wanted to talk with the Commission about that, introduce the concept to the Commission to see if the Commission would be interested in the idea and if it would be willing to work on the creation of such a network. It's going to take a great deal of work. It's going to take a great deal of effort, but the most important thing is it's going to take a piece of legislation going through the legislature and signed by the Governor that relieves private property owners of liability. One of the biggest problems we have is that private property needs to be used, and private property owners don't want to use their property in a way that could increase their risk. So we need to create a piece of paper that basically alleviates that risk. I would, based upon experience with legislature, since they only meet 60 days a year, if we don't submit and we don't work on it, then we're liable to lose another year. And since the legislative session's coming up, I just think that it's a very valid idea that I think could bring a great deal of tours and dollars to our community and be a great asset to the overall well-being of our community and as well as being very profitable. So there's no way, easy way, there's no handbook that says you start here and do this. All of these trails are going to be in the county, or could be in the county, if you guys, if it works. They could be in some cities, they could be in no cities. So it seems like the County Commission's the appropriate first place to start. I've spoken with the City of Morgantown, I've spoken with the City of Westover, I've spoken with the Town of Granville. It seems that they're interested in the concept as well. The reaction from the legislatures seem to be of interest. So it seems like it's a valid and worthwhile proposal, but it seems like in order to make it work, we at least need to have some official support or interest. And so what I'd like to do, if possible, is just introduce the concept to you, see if it's something you'd be willing to work on, and if so, figure out an appropriate way to formally work on it with you, if possible. The city, in addition to the cities, the CVB, the Chamber of Commerce, the Development Authorities have all expressed interest in the concept as well. So there's nothing formal at this time, because obviously it's a little bit early, but I do believe we've got 30 days to put together a community effort, if you would, and see if this will actually work. I think if it does work, the Hatfield McCoy Trail System's success in the southern part of the state is an example of what it could be here in Mon County. And with the number of hotels that we have recently had constructed and opened, we have the capacity to support a pretty substantial tourism effort. And the West Virginia Forward concept that was supported by W.B. Marshall and the Development Office identified high-end tourism as a way to promote the economy. This is consistent with that concept and that project. And so instead of building things, and for lack of a better word, in the middle of nowhere, which some things are, and try to build the infrastructure to support that, we have the infrastructure here. We simply need to create the attraction.
Okay. A question then.
Sheriff, please.
Did not the Hatfield McCoy legislation, is that just a one, was that a one-piece?
It's my understanding that's the case, yes.
So it only applied to that particular entity?
That's correct. And it might be.
Is there, is it capable, let's put it, is it, would it be capable to duplicate the wording of that particular legislation so that it could be expedited here? Because writing a bill with less than 30 days before beginning introduction would be somewhat difficult. I mean, not just, not getting the support. I wholeheartedly support your, you know, your concept as far as I personally, particularly in terms of recreation, but do we have that piece of legislation?
Yeah, ironically, I think that is my intent.
He wrote it, right?
Is to do cut and paste.
Okay.
For lack of a better, better way.
To clarify that, you wrote the legislation.
No, no.
You assisted with it?
Yeah, way back when, 20-some years ago, I was the Economic Development Director for Logan County.
Yes.
And so the legislation itself was drafted, and so we sort of helped support it. So I wasn't involved with the actual writing, but having written or had a big part of writing the local bill, having this bill drafted by the start of legislative session is not a problem.
Okay.
And so there was another Senate bill that was passed last year but vetoed by the Senate that created or provided the opportunity for any trail system to be created in the state. But that was for motorized trails?
Yes.
And I think that there were some problems about, you can't do too many of those. That opens up, you know, how does, how do you put non-licensed vehicles or, you know, non-street legal vehicles on state roads everywhere? There's a lot more specific problems to that type of trail network versus bicycles. The vision I have is for bicycles only. We have a traffic problem anyway.
Then to begin this, would you like to be placed on work sessions?
It's, you know, we've worked well together on other things in the past, so I didn't know. I just wanted to throw it out there.
Why don't we see about getting it as soon as possible?
And see if you'd like to, and with the holidays coming up.
I understand, but the legislature meets soon.
Yeah, so that's what I thought. Well, you know what, why don't we try? And if we don't, if it doesn't work, no harm, no foul.
Do we have some time next week?
Yes.
Do we have some time next week, if you're available?
I would love to do that.
Jason, one other question. When you spoke at the Chamber Breakfast last week and all the legislators that were there, did any indicate a willingness to champion something like this?
Pretty much no negative comments at all.
Okay.
So it's one of those things, I never know what the first step is. I always look at it from like a property development deal.
Let's take a step.
That's all I would like to do, and if you guys are willing to do it, we're willing to try to figure out a way to do that, too. There's a lot of details to work out, but the legislation is the first important thing. Who's going to manage it, who's going to operate it? All that stuff can be worked out, but if we don't have the right to build the trails, none of that matters.
Right. Yes.
Thank you.
Certainly be interested in talking to you.
Yes. Do we have any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll close. Comments from the public? Colleen, do we have any grants?
I do. I have requests for reimbursement from VOCA in the amount of $6,535.81. I have the Day Report Center grant in the amount of $15,119.48. And then I have the Community Development Block Grant, the July request for reimbursement in the amount of $940.80. Another Community Development Block Grant, this one is August, and it is in the amount of $1,030.40. September Community Development Block Grant, $940.80. October, $985.60. And lastly, November, in the amount of $985.60.
Move for approval for the President to sign?
Second, it's been properly moved and seconded, for me to sign these grants. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Next, we have a petition for removal of personal representatives and appointment of personal representatives in regard to the estate of Jerry Elcovee Jr. We have before us a fiduciary report from Cynthia Stafford, who has made a recommendation that there be a replacement in this particular entity. Is there, yes?
I'm sorry, I'm here representing the petitioners in this case. My name is Brandon Flower. I'm an attorney out of Fairmont. I represent Ms. Dunagan and Mr. Covey.
Okay. Please proceed.
Thank you, or sir. In this matter, my clients sought to file this petition because their father passed away in early 2015. In May of 2015, his will was submitted to the Clerk's office. The will provided that two of his daughters, also beneficiaries, that would be Charlotte Childress and Florence Drop, were to be named as co-executrixes in this matter. They were approved and appointed on May 1st of 2015, and following that date, the record indicates absolutely nothing has happened in regards to the settlement of this estate. It's over two and a half years at this point, and almost three years to Mr. Covey's passing in 2015. My clients had attempted to get information from their sisters. My clients are also beneficiaries and siblings of the co-executrixes. There were six siblings and six beneficiaries in this, in this estate matter. They've been unable to get any information as to the handling of the estate, what has been going on in regards to the assets, any kind of an accounting. In fact, have had very little or to no contact in the last year or two with either Ms. Childress or Ms. Drop. So they sought to have Ms. Childress and Ms. Drop removed because they have clearly failed to live up to the duties of a fiduciary in this case. West Virginia Code requires that the appraisement be filed within 90 days of the date of the appointment. That has not happened in this case. In fact, Ms. Van Stafford, who is here, seated in the back of the courtroom, has sent letters to the co-executrixes, the respondents in this case, on four occasions, advising them of their duty to file the appraisal, what needed to be done. The first letter initially, upon her appointment as the fiduciary commissioner in this case. And then three subsequent dates, following the passage of the deadline, and most recently in October of this year, a letter was sent to both of the respondents. Ms. Van Stafford received no response from either of the respondents in this case, and I think her report indicates as such, that she provided to the court dated December 5th. She got no response from the respondents. And then, not until after the filing of this petition, which was filed, I believe, on November 29th, November 30th, did anything occur. And it's most recently, I think, this week, on the 11th, I believe it was, Ms. Childress provided a fax to the Clerk's office claiming that a appraisal had been sent to Ms. Van Stafford, as well as a check in the amount of $150, as requested by Ms. Van Stafford for the appraisement of the estate. As Ms. Van Stafford's letter dated, I believe, either yesterday or today to the court indicates, she never received that appraisal or that check. Her records indicate that she did not cash or file any check with the bank, she's not deposited that. She never received anything. I think the evidence is clear that the respondents have clearly failed to live up to their obligations as a fiduciary in this matter. To move the estate forward, their duty to the estate and to the other beneficiaries in this case, their four siblings. And West Virginia Code 4453F provides that if a non-resident is appointed and in excess of six months fails to file the appraisal, they shall be removed. It's not a, you know, the Commission may, but it's a shall. That's not happened in this case, notwithstanding the claims at this point, which quite frankly are very late, seem to be very self-serving at this point. In fact, again, no response was made until this petition was filed, even though Ms. Van Stafford, just as recently as October, sent a letter. Multiple occasions. Ms. Van Stafford is here, I suppose she could testify to the Commission as to any of these matters. My client, Rose Dunagan, one of the beneficiaries, is here. She could testify to the Commission. Her brother, Mr. Covey, who's also a petitioner, could not physically be here today. He lives in Washington State, so the travel here would have been a little difficult, especially, I think we had about two weeks' notice of this hearing, a little less than that. But if there's any evidence that needs to be presented, we're willing and ready to provide that at this time through Ms. Dunagan and Ms. Van Stafford. But I believe the record in the Clerk's office is just clear. Nothing has happened with this case since May 1st of 2015, other than Ms. Van Stafford's diligent attempts to attempt to get the respondents to comply with their duties. So based on all that, we'd ask the Court, the Commission, to order that Ms. Childress and Ms. Drop be removed as the executrixes, the fiduciaries in this case. Ms. Dunagan is willing to assume that role, and with the assistance of my office, which for, you know, several decades has assisted clients in these kinds of matters of states, we can assist her in handling the estate, closing this estate, and getting it to a resolution. There's other relief that we've asked for in the petition, that Ms. Childress and Ms. Drop be personally responsible for the cost of this proceedings because of their personal failure to fulfill their duties. We ask that they provide an accounting to the Court, the Commission, from the time that they were appointed, May 1st, 2015, through current, as to anything that has occurred with the assets of the estate, because at this point, we don't know, other than, I suppose, what they filed earlier this week. And any other relief that the Court deems necessary, proper, and just equitable at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would our fiduciary commissioner care to?
I'm sorry. Oh.
Any remarks you may have on this, please.
I'm sorry.
Any remarks you may have on this?
I just want to reiterate that although I was faxed an appraisement dated June 25th, 2015, and a copy of a check, I never received those items. Even the copies that I received are inaccurate. If I would have received them, I would have sent them back to them to be corrected. It lacks a notary seal, it lacks the signature of the other co-executor. And it is also my understanding that the copy of the check was not cashed, which I think is for the proof that I never received any of this documentation. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Motion to approve the fiduciary commissioner's recommendation?
Let's, one, let's, one second. Please allow, if there is anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the petition?
I thought there was no one here.
Okay. Please.
Hi.
Identify yourself, please.
Hi, I am Charlotte Marie Childress.
Okay.
Okay. This is for both of you. This is what was faxed. I received the information hearing on Friday. Each time that I have received a letter, I have sent a copy of the same document back to them with the copy of the check. I've checked with the bank, the bank, it is not cleared. I have, for the last time period, when we put in this amount, and the copy that I have, when we had it notarized, my sister is here with me, she immediately, there in the offices, who notarized it, put it in an envelope. At that time, I realize now that I, and at that time, when I sent it back the first time, it did not, I did not have a copy with a seal. And each time that I sent a letter forward with all this information, I said, what should I do next? This has not been cashed. I have continued to work the estate. The estate is down, was down, and in this information, $160,000. I have sent every item that has happened with this estate. I have now got the balances up to $178,000. I have now put another petition in, which the first one was denied with United Mine Workers of America, for additional funds that are owed to my father, which I'm working to collect. My sister, when I spoke to her in June, at my aunt's leaving the state, I told her that by the end of the year, I hope to have all of this finished. I did not have balances for her at that time. I have not had a phone call from her, I have not had a text from her. My brother Jim, who is in Florida, I have been in contact with, he has been in contact with them, he has told them what is going on, the monies that I'm trying to get. I just reconciled with West Virginia University Hospital, an $18,000 debt, down to $1,800, which I will be paying this week. All monies from day one have gone into the account. All monies have been paid to Sundell Nursing Home at the time of closure. Everything's been taken care of. I've kept in touch with them through my brother Jim, who has been in contact with them. I have responded to all information. I have done everything on top of that, and right now, I'm also researching two more accounts where my mother, in the last parts of her life, I worked with her on all of her income. She had started putting money in small, different places. I have been tracking it down. I've just found another IRA that I do believe is hers. I'm going after it. She gave me two insurance accounts, which she said she had closed because, to pay bills. I have tracked down that one of them is potentially not closed. I'm going in for a resolution of released property to make sure that I can get her for her. I have been working extremely hard on this account and this estate, and my sister and I both, we waived any of the fees or anything owed to us, so that all monies would be equally divided. I'm not getting a cent for doing anything that I've done. So I am blown away.
Ellis.
And if there's anything else you need, I can give you documents, proof.
Is there, is there anybody else that wishes to speak in behalf of this?
No, I'm speaking for my sister.
Okay.
And you do have a letter from my brother in Florida.
Yes, I did. I saw the, I read the letter.
Right. And my brother, who is, other brother, who is in South America right now, is supposed to be getting something to you as well, because he did not get the court letter. And I'm sorry, I would have more for you, but having five days, I apologize.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Van Stafford, would you come forward again? Just a couple of questions. In light of the testimony, would you be satisfied with a extension of report, but a deadline placed upon this, rather than replacement? This is a question of, you, you basically handle this, you know, for, you know, for us, as well as the other appointees?
I understand the desire, because it sounds like she has done a lot of work. However, my office has received nothing from her.
Okay.
Nothing.
But my question was.
That is an, a deadline.
I mean, it is within our power to extend, I believe.
Yes.
If so, what would you recommend, please?
A month.
Okay.
I would recommend a month. If they have done this amount of work, they should be able to turn around the document that they sent me, claim they have sent to me.
Fine.
Within a month.
Would that be acceptable, a one-month extension? If not, then this petition would be voted upon for replacement.
No, because I just contacted the United Mine Workers Friday. They had denied one of his black lung potential claims, but they said, if I can get it back into them this week, they have another hearing coming up, and they will see if they can, based on some additional medical information that I sent.
I will need a motion to that effect, if you feel the same.
Certainly. I mean, I'm sitting here, and again, I was sort of a little premature in attempting to make a motion, but it was my understanding that there had been no communication. And it does sound like you're doing a lot of work, so we have two different sides saying two completely different stories. So regardless of that, let's see if we can fix the communication change and, you know, this, when we're going to extend this, we're going to extend it, and we want to see this acted on.
My question right now, I've got the checkbook right here. I can do whatever checks are needed right now to replace that. You said we need another notarized receipt, we can refill, whatever you need to do.
I actually have with me two blank forms that if you want to fill out and you can notarize, and if you want to correct, the email one that you sent to me.
Just take a petition, do not extend for her.
That can be done.
All right. Can I just use the information I had?
Let's, let's just go ahead and do this out of.
Yes.
Yeah, and the other thing, too, is whatever it needs to be, you said she sent you an appraisal, but it was incorrect. Whatever needs to be fixed.
Well, it's, it's correct for what was known at that time.
I've been able to gather additional money, is what's happened, because that was what they were, but I've been able to go back and find monies and get monies back that people said were, that Mom had paid, that she shouldn't have paid, just a lot of things I've been looking for.
Anyway, yeah, the appraisal was faxed to me this week.
And to be fair, does the other gentleman need to say anything else?
Mr. Flowers?
I can just have a quick.
You may.
Sure.
I understand you may be willing to consider extension at this point. I just would at least note from my client's perspective, their objection to that. But I would note that according to my client, and as well as Mr. Covey, Ms. Dunagan and Ms. Covey, they have had no communication from either of their sisters about this, and not even within this past year. So I understand there's a difference of opinion, the facts as to this, but I would at least note that, and I would note that I had not received, and I don't think my clients have received anything in response to the petition from either of the respondents. I don't know if they mailed it, and it's just not been received in my office yet. What I received was from Ms. Van Stafford. So when Ms. Childress mentioned letters from her siblings, I have not seen any of that information at this point. And if at some point I could get a copy of that, would that be either from Ms. Childress or if I could get a copy from the Commission?
Okay.
Thank you.
So the motion is to deny the current petition and approve a month extension?
Yes. I will second that motion now. It's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. There is one month extension being granted in this case. Please, since Ms. Van Stafford is here, proceed, and let's get this matter. I prefer not to see this back before us in a month. I would like to have a reconciliation.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Let's move on to correspondence. What do we have in terms of correspondence?
We don't have anything.
We have no correspondence. Any unfinished business?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, then we'll move to new business. First, on the new business is consideration of requisition number 15 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District sub-account.
Yes, this is for payment towards the bonds. It's in the amount of $88,423.
Move for approval?
Second, it's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, consider the revised application for full year 2017, 18 County Commission grant funding for senior Monongayians. I'll let you speak to that.
We met last week in work session with, with the senior Monongayians, and to give a little bit of a background, when we were going through our grant process, we had some questions about the finances and the overall direction of the senior Monongayians. I was noting that program, or indirect expenses were going up while program expenses were going down, which isn't something that's sustainable. So in our initial application, we approved $100,000 for the senior Monongayians. They have. They have since then come in to two separate work sessions, and the first one for us to lay our concerns, which they agreed with, and the second one to come back with the revised financials. And in our discussion, we had talked about a certain unserved part of the population. And we, that's something that we are interested in hearing about, how we could possibly help serve that, that part of the unserved population. So what the revised application is for is the full amount that was originally requested is 120,000, we approved 100, which I would recommend that we approve. And on top of that, we're going to continue conversations on an ongoing basis for, for the next grant year, to talk about how we can cut into that unserved population.
Is that a form of a motion?
So my motion being that we accept their current request to, for the revised application in the amount of 120, which would be an increase of $20,000 for the current program year.
I'll second that for discussion. The discussion, I don't see anybody here from that entity. Last work session, it was discussed, and it was admitted to commission that the decisions that commission made initially were correct based on the information that was given to commission to, to make the decisions. Since then, they came forward with other documentation that has led to this change, but it was in no way a decision that was reached at by commission to cut money just simply upon a whim. It was based upon what fact was presented. When new facts were presented, then there was an alteration and decided to be re-grant or to make the full amount of the funding possible. So, hearing that, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Lastly, we have the second reading and public hearing for the proposed vicious dog ordinance. What we need first of all is somebody to speak to this entity.
Well, seeing that two ladies that worked on this ordinance really hard are not here today, I am going to try to do my best to present this to the commission. Right now, as it stands, there is state law for vicious dogs. But this ordinance will give Montingale County more backing and more teeth to be able to go and pursue this, so we can put this into action with our dog wardens. So this is what they're asking for today, for this adoption of this ordinance, to go into effect in Mon County, so we can go on and keep moving forward with it.
Okay. It is as read in of the record, we're not going to read the entire ordinance, but it is available for anybody to purview. Is there anybody now who wishes to speak in support of this ordinance? Hearing none, is there anybody who is opposed to this ordinance, if you would wish to speak? Hearing and seeing none, I don't believe it would be necessary to have any, any other discussion, and we'll call for a vote?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented to the commission.
Thank you. And second, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, the ordinance is now passed. Is there any other new business?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any reports from elected officials? Hearing none, we'll move to reports from county commissioners. Sean?
As Ed indicated earlier, Tom is not here, but he'll be here this afternoon. This afternoon, I won't be here. I'll be participating in a meeting with the FAA, which, this, this particular meeting is the third meeting we've had since last Thursday. Tomorrow, and then we'll have a follow-up meeting tomorrow, so we're really pushing hard to try to get the green light to submit our justification study for the runway extension. So hopefully, if all goes well today, we'll be resubmitting our revised justification shortly after this meeting, and that's a, that's a big hurdle. It's nothing to be popping champagne bottles about, but it is, it would be a significant accomplishment to at least start the next process forward, so I'm looking forward to that. Last, you see, last week, we had a number of events going on. On Friday, there was a Star City Parade, which was wonderful, the weather was perfect for it, freezing, and then after that, there was the President's Christmas Party, which was a nice event. I think there was more people there from Charleston than there was from Morgantown, so it was a good opportunity to, to put names with faces on a lot of people we deal with at the state level. Yesterday, I had an, the Morgantown Area Alliance, or Partnership, whatever you want to call it, we had an executive committee meeting to see where we stand on that, so there's a lot of good, good things moving forward to that regard. And yesterday, I appreciate the county clerk for inviting us to her Christmas party, it was very nice getting out with your staff, and I appreciate the, the offer, it was, is a very nice event. This morning, we had our meeting with our, bi-weekly meeting with our IT department, and we have a number of things going on. We hope to have our, our web kickoff meeting next week. Not related to that, but in regards to the leasing program, we're having their, the vendor's Total View. It's, it's the system that's going to help us manage our cars, and we have a demonstration on that Friday, so there's a lot of different things going on. Thursday, I have the, the annual Development Authority and then Mon Area Economic Partnership joint meeting that we have tomorrow afternoon, so that will be my first one, participating in that. And then one last thing, old business, I can confirm, I went out and actually took a picture of it, that the fire, the fire hydrant was finally installed across the street from Mason Dixon Historical Park, which adds a valuable piece of fire suppression infrastructure to that part of the county. So I'm glad to see, after sitting inoperable for over a year, I'm glad to see that finally operational. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, the W reception Dr. Gee had at Blaney House was very well attended. I, I'd like to thank him for the invitation, as, as indeed thank Carrie for the invitation yesterday to, to meet with her staff and to have, have a Christmas dinner with them. It's really good to see departments working together. Speaking of working together, I'd like to applaud, particularly at this time of year, the efforts of the individuals such as Christian Help, Salvation Army, United Way, and there's many others, but I, I spent Tuesday, or Monday evening sorting cans of soup. I never knew, and have never seen, that many cans of soup, and that's all I did for a few hours, was simply sort soup cans. Tonight is planning commission, and on Saturday, just in case anybody might be interested, Ed the Elf will make his appearance at the annual Breakfast with Santa. That's going to be at the, for children, donation only. Come out, see us, and have a good time. That's, that's at the new airport facility, so I'm looking forward to that. Thank you. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
What, what old business are you on this?
Oh, we're done.
Can I ask a question while you're still open to meeting?
You may. You'll have to come, you'll have to come with, I'm sorry, we, we said old business, okay?
My name's Matt Speekman, I'm a longtime resident of Morgantown, and I guess I'm going to speak on behalf of some of the other fellow citizens of mine, which are friends, that we play hockey down here at the, Bow Park.
I'll give you three minutes.
All right. I just, I'm just asking for a report from your standpoint as to what may happen or what's being proposed to be done with the money that was granted.
We don't have reports on that.
You wouldn't have any information on that?
No, sir.
Well, Bow Park is handling that.
Bow Park, it's totally under their authority.
Yes, the, the money that goes to the, from the levee goes to, goes to Bow Park, so you would have to go and address those individuals.
All right, thank you for your time, that's all I needed.
It's okay.
I mean, obviously, this is a public meeting, you're, you're welcome to, to state your concerns for or against the project, but, yeah, they're handling everything in regards to that.
I, I hadn't heard for certain anything they were going to do, I think they're still just doing some investigating and some planning, is that correct?
You can, Ben can confirm, but there was an article just recently in a paper about the status. It's kind of, it's kind of like our airport project, it's like you hear a little bit about it, and it doesn't seem to be anything moving, but they are moving forward, I believe they're at the point where they're contacted four firms to do, do some drawings. So, I mean, they're still in the planning stages, but they're trying to figure all that out.
All right, well, thank you, and I hope I didn't offend anybody by jumping in on inappropriate.
Not a problem.
Thank you. All right. I will take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, we are adjourned.